Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. This being the first meeting of city council for 2023. So, welcome. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Bales.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Doer.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia. Mayor Stone.
Here. I have a motion to excuse.
Motion to excuse Vice Mayor Garcia.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would now like to turn it over to Councilmember Curran for the pledge.
Thank you, Your Honor.
If you'd all rise, please.
I have the pledge. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Lord, we pray for wisdom, for strength, for courage, to do what is right and good for all of our citizens. And we put the interest of others above our own. May we act with love for the common good. And we be good neighbors, recognizing your image in every person we meet. Just pray a moment of silence for counsel, for guidance and direction in this new year. Amen.
Thank you. All right, we have an agenda before us this evening. Any changes?
We approve the agenda, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have the approval of the minutes from the December 12th regular session meeting. Any comments?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for December 12th as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. First on the agenda is public hearing, PC 22-9.
PC 22-9. Notice hereby given that a public hearing will be held at Beaver Creek City Hall, 1368 Research Park Drive, Beaver Creek, Ohio, 45432, on January 9th, 2023, at 6:00 p.m., for the purpose of correcting the zoning designation of those properties listed in the public notice. Ordinance 23-1, an ordinance amending the zoning designation on several parcels on the zoning map to remove multi-zone property designations.
Thank you. Mr. Burkett.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of the city council. Fortunately, I get to be tonight both the applicant and the staff representation, so we'll go to two for one.
Well, no, that's not allowed, no.
I can have Sandra be the applicant if we'd like. The case you have before you, while it's being pulled up, what happened was in 2021, we did a, we converted the way we display and catalog the zoning map from a straight visual, a straight picture-based map and converted it into GIS as we were, you know, integrating GIS into all the departments. So, we converted that to a GIS map. And one thing that we found was there are several properties in the city because the parcel lines don't necessarily match up with the lines of the zoning, there's multiple properties in the city that have two different zoning designations, part of it being agricultural, part of it being residential, was the most often that we had found. So, early last year, we had started the process of reaching out to several property owners that had those multiple designations to just get their feedback on, and see what their interest was in the city taking forward an application to get rid of some of those multiple zoning designations. So, we sent it out to about 25, 26 people. We actually heard back from 21 that were in favor of it, and one person didn't want to do it, and a few that, you know, we tried several times. We sent letters out, and we attended phone calls, and Sandra actually went out to the people at their house and tried to make physical contact with them, but we just couldn't get a hold of three people. So, what we have here this evening are the 21 that we did get authorization from to go through this process. Seen here is the map of the properties that we're discussing this evening. A lot of them are up north in the large development just north of Lance Road. One is St. Luke's property, a few along Creekside Drive, and then one is actually our public service building that's out in Alpha, a part of it's zoned I-1 and a part of it is zoned O-1, so we wanted to bring that, and we wanted to correct that on ours, too. So, again, each of the properties had a mix of zonings. This could have been caused by, just again, they were done, over the years, it was done from a graphical standpoint, just place, using AutoCAD and an underlying parcel map, and so now we combine that, and so it's all one parcel, using the parcel data. So, we found in instances in the past when property owners had contacted us and wanted to sell the property or wanted to refinance the property, banks had a really hard time giving them lending because they needed it to be either all agricultural, or all residential, and it just was a headache. So, we've actually taken a few properties over the years through, for them, for that purpose. So, this one, it's a win-win. It helps the city kind of get rid of those anomalies on the map, but also in the future it'll help the homeowners, should they want to sell, refinance, or go through any of that. One thing I wanted to point out, there's no, none of the proposed changes in the ordinance this evening was where we introduced a completely separate zoning designation, so it wasn't like one was split A-1 and R-1A, and we all of a sudden just brought in a B-2 or something like. So, of the properties that are proposed to go through this, at least a portion of the property is zoned currently what we're proposing to incorporate the entire parcel. And this is just an example. One down, I believe this is one, it's on Dayton-Zeonia Road. It actually sits north of Dayton-Zeonia Road by a couple hundred feet, where they, on the left, you see that's the existing zoning, and the parcel line is the dark, the thicker black line, and a portion of it is R-1A and a portion of A-1. So, what we did was look, and since it's majority A-1 now, we're proposing to just convert the whole thing to A-1. And we did that, and that's with, I mean, there's several parcels. I can go through them all, but it's just the same thing with all of the parcels where like a stub is R-1A, so we're just bringing the whole thing to A-1. But I took it through Planning Commission. The only change that came about at Planning Commission was the Southfield Park. It was, we proposed it to go R-1A. It's Beaver Creek City-owned, and the neighbors preferred us to take it to A-1, and it really did make a difference to us either way because there's no intent at this time to subdivide it. And if that were ever an attempt, it would have to go through several processes in the future, but there's nothing on, nothing on any radar that we'd ever want to develop on anyway. So, there wasn't a problem going from R-1A to A-1 on that one. But Planning Commission and planning staff recommend approval of the 21 zoning changes that are found in your ordinance, and I'll be happy to answer any questions following public input. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. Is anyone present this evening that would like to address counsel on this, on this, ordinance is what it is? Please come forward. Seeing none, we will move on to council input. Start on, Councilmember Bales, you want to start?
Sure. Mr. Burkett, did you use the majority of each parcel, you know, to make your decision, or was it something different than that?
In most cases, it was the majority. I think there were a few where it just didn't make sense to introduce, where it was like surrounded by one type of zoning district and a little sliver was to change. So, in, I'd say all but one, we did the majority from an acre standpoint. I think the only one we didn't was because of the Southfield one, where the neighborhood requested it, so it came out to...
And did Planning Board go parcel by parcel?
They had, I mean, we showed them these maps, and I gave them the maps in the presentation and in their packet.
And do you know the reason why the one property owner did not consent?
They just weren't, they said no. They never gave a reason, just, nope, not interested. It was the larger farm that's on North Fairfield Road, near Indian Ripple, a 235-acre farm.
And so, and that one's not included?
That is not included. Yeah, we weren't going to take anybody's property that wasn't on board with it, yeah.
That's all the questions I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Randy, Sandra, thank you for your good work. Can you clarify what's happening on page 48 of the packet? Because it looks like a lot of it's been cleaned up. I think 45 and 48 overlap on Pheasant Run, and I don't think it's a, I think it's a parcel between the two parcels that have been changed, but it too is, the changes have been made.
Let's see here. I think it, we only did parcel by parcel and...
Because the changes have been made either side, but not in the parcel in the middle. That was one, just they wouldn't contact? Great, okay. That's what I figured. Thank you.
About here, is that what you're talking about?
No, no, no. Yes.
Yes, the one in the middle is the one, one of the ones we couldn't get in contact with.
Okay.
And I didn't want to force any zoning on anybody.
Okay.
Councilmember Adams?
I really have no comment.
Councilmember Schwartz?
No comment. Just thank you for your work.
Councilmember Curran?
No comment, Your Honor.
No comment here. It makes sense to clean this up. Thank you. Any further discussion? Though I have a motion to move to the second reading.
Mayor, I motion to move ordinance 23-1 to a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 23-1 onto the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is PUD 22-4.
PUD 22-4, an application filed by DHC Partners LLC, 7953 Washington Woods Drive, Dayton, Ohio, 45459. The application requests approval to rezone 8.429 acres from R-1A, one-family residential district, and A-1 agriculture district to our PUD residential planned unit development to allow for construction of a retirement community. The properties are located at 2705 Lilian Lane, further described as Book Four, Page Four, Parcell Six and Fourteen on the Green County Tax Atlas.
Thank you.
Ordinance 23-2, an ordinance rezoning 8.429 acres from R-1A, one-family residential and A-1 agriculture, further described as Book Four, Page Four, Parcel Six and Parcel Fourteen on the property tax maps of Green County, Ohio, to our PUD 22-4 residential planned unit development.
Now, thank you. All right, is there an applicant present this evening? Can you please come forward and give us a name and address, and the floor is all yours?
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, counsel, and all the people present here. I am representing DHC Partners. My name is Raj Katurwal, 7953 Washington Woods Drive, Dayton, Ohio, 45459. And this, these two parcels are right close to the temple that serves our community, and we are planning to set up a retirement community there. The two parcels are currently zoned at A-1 and R-1A, and the zoning application that we have put together is for our PUD. That gives us the ability to come, to use these two parcels with a six density and produce a plan, a site-specific plan after the rezoning is passed by the council, and then come back to the Planning Commission for approval. So, our timeline, we'd like to, once the zoning is approved, we'd like to get the plans in place and start work on it yet this year, as per engineering support and architectural support that is available and contractors that may be available, and select a developer which works in the local area, and get it to completion hopefully by end of '24, if not earlier.
Very good.
So, I'm ready for any questions, counsel.
All right, well, we're going to hear from staff, and then there'll be, we'll get to the questions, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. This is an application, it's PUD 22-4. It's a rezoning, so it'd be the first phase of a PUD, and again, the applicant's requesting to rezone about eight and a half acres from partially A-1, partially R-1A to a new our PUD. As the applicant stated, it's in northern Beaver Creek, just north of the Hindu temple that's on Lilian Lane right now. You can see here's an aerial photo of the two parcels. The northern parcel's a little less than five acres, and the southern parcel's a little bit more than three and a half acres. The northern parcel has a house, driveway, and the southern parcel is pretty much completely vacant. There is some landscaping along the southern perimeter of that parcel and along the northern perimeter of the northern parcel, in terms of shade trees and evergreen trees. Again, the northern parcel is zoned A-1 agricultural, and the southern parcel is R-1A, single-family residential. To the south is CPUD 08-1, excuse me, and that's the Hindu temple. To the west is CPUD 94-4, which is a major commercial retail center, regional commercial retail center. To the east is multifamily, our PUD 99-9 and 96-1, it's a medium-density residential to the east. The land use plan has classified this as medium-density residential, meaning that up to six dwelling units an acre is what medium density is defined in the land use plan. Now, that is the same classification that's to the north, to east, and to the south. And to the west is obviously the regional commercial and office designation. What they're proposing this evening is to read on the property, have a modified list of R-3, R-4 zoning, which allows retirement centers and nursing homes, and some multifamily. When I brought this forward to Planning Commission, I included in the proposed uses single-family, two-family row houses, or townhomes, and there was much discussion at Planning Commission about the concern with traffic generated by single-family homes and two-family homes. So, they took, they made a motion to remove two families, one-family, two-family, and all the other permitted uses, and left it with just the conditional uses that you see, well, it's not on that list, but it's the conditional uses you see in your staff report, meaning the conditional uses of R-2, nursing homes, places of religious assembly, retirement communities. And one thing that we didn't think about, that wasn't realized until after the meeting and after the vote, was that action removed all uses by right, so there's no permitted uses within the PUD, it's only conditional uses in the PUD. And so, I'm proposing to reinstate the two-family residential, the multifamily dwellings, boarding houses, public libraries, community centers, and townhomes, which is, which you would find that they are permitted uses in the R-2 and R-3. Just looking at the traffic generated by, I know that their concern was traffic, just looking at the traffic numbers, and with the acres they have, they could put 50 units on there, at six dwelling units an acre. So, 50 units of single-family would generate 479 trips a day. 50 units of apartment units didn't, not necessarily the number in each building, but apartments, 333 trips per day. And then senior living units would be 186 units per days, or trips per day, so that's less than half the trips per day. So, what we're proposing is to add back in the two-family and multifamily boarding houses in the community. And in the proposed ordinance for your consideration, I highlighted those uses in blue, just so you have a deferenti, differentiation between what is permitted and what we're proposing to add to the permitted uses. I reached out to, I let Planning Commission know that I was going to propose the inclusion of these new uses, just based on telling them that, you know, after reflection, that we removed all the permitted uses, and they only have uses that are conditional, that can be a slippery slope of whether or not being regulatory taking, because you're not guaranteed conditional uses, there's no guarantee. So, I don't want to create a PUD where there's no guaranteed uses in it. So, I only heard back from one Planning Commissioner, and they didn't have a problem with it, and the others had a Planning Commission between now and then, and they never brought it up. So, the chair is the one I talked to, and he said that that makes sense, what I'm proposing, but didn't want to take it through the whole public hearing again at Planning Commission. But again, those proposed additional uses are in blue in your proposed ordinance, and I'll be happy to answer any questions following public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this also is a public hearing. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address counsel on this application? Please come forward and give us a name and address. We ask that you limit your comments to about three minutes.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. My name is Mr. Ed Stanek. I'm a resident of the complex immediately east of the proposed development.
I need an address, please.
306 Willow Brook Way, Beaver Creek, 45431. I had been a candidate several times for the city, the condominium complex, Board of Directors, and so I feel like I represented many people from that community. There's approximately 300-plus residential units there. You may have know one or, one or two of the people on the board. Anyway, we haven't had a general discussion of what the general community has, how they feel, but I've spoken to a few people on the board, or informer board, as well as some of the residents along Lilian Lane, who may be concerned about the development. Now, I attended the zoning commission meeting when that was proposed, and I had a chance to meet with Dr. Agarwal and his staff people to, and what their goal was in trying to develop this property. I feel there are a couple of people that were objection, had some objections. My main concern, and I think the concern of the residents in that general area, especially some of the homeowners on Hillsdale Lane, was the traffic along Lilian Lane. Otherwise, the project is, I think, they're good, the temple has been a good neighbor. I know Dr. Agarwal, and I know people that are friends, friends of mine that are friends of his. So, we would like to be good neighbors and work together to make this a good project for the community and for the general neighborhood. So, at this point, I don't object to, or won't object to, any of the changes in zoning as long as it fits the city's requirements, and hopefully we'll be able to work through this to the best benefit of everyone, again, with the concern for traffic and the roadway. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we will go just reverse. I'll ask Councilmember Curran if he'd like any comments.
I don't have any comments, Your Honor. It's going to be a good facility and work together.
All right, Councilmember Schwartz?
I also do not have any questions or comments at this time.
Thank you.
Councilmember Adams?
I don't have any comments on this, but I know from, when it comes to a site survey, I'll have several questions, so at this point, I don't have anything.
Councilmember Doer?
Thank you, Mayor. To float an idea, to put back 2G alone and to strike the rest of them, Randy, just, I'd like to get your wisdom on that, because for the residents, there is a real concern of traffic. The applicant wants to put in place a nursing home, so 2G makes sense, and so to assuage any concern about changes or how this would affect the community, given that the applicant wants a nursing home, 2G would fit it, is that the one we could put back alone, or?
I mean, you could put those back alone. I mean, I think that, to give options, I mean, if they decide they want to do duplexes for, as with the retirement community, but then not necessarily limit it to only 55 and up, I just think that the more flexibility we can have, knowing that there's also a condition that they can't be more than six dwelling units an acre, so I mean, regardless if they do it one building, or duplexes, or quads, or six in a building, they can't go more than the 50 units at all. I think that the biggest, I mean, the, where it stands out from a traffic standpoint is single families above, I mean, it's on a level of its own, that's why we're suggesting not putting that back in, but, you know, city council obviously can pick and choose whatever they want on this, but this is what we recommend, just so that there are options and not have to come back through the legislative process if something changes.
And there's a bigger picture at play in terms of development, so I understand that. So, thank you.
Councilmember Bales?
I want to thank you for running it by the Planning Commission after you had the revelation, and you did say that you had, you've had a meeting since then, and it wasn't even mentioned, is that correct?
Yeah, I was expecting, if somebody was mad, for them to say something, I mean, offline, obviously, but they didn't say anything, except the chairman called me about 20 minutes after I sent the email out, and it was in agreement.
Okay, very good. The traffic on Lilian Lane and Hillsdale, I can imagine the concern. I share the concern. I think it's largely a big cut-through street to avoid the mall traffic and everything else, so I understand that. I'm not certain that a retirement community is going to adversely affect that too much, though, so...
Certainly require, have less than a half number of trips in a single-family neighborhood would.
Yeah.
This is also in the impact fee-eligible district, too, so when we get to, when we get to the site plan stage, there are impact fees that have to be required, so that impact fee could be used on any impact fee-eligible roadway improvement, when we find that they're needed.
Thinking about Councilman Doer's question about 2G, the retirement communities, do we have a definition of what that means?
We do. The retirement community is, as we define it in the zoning code, is any community that falls under, basically, it's any community that has the age restriction of 55 and up, so where it's governed by that section of the ORC that they can limit, so...
But does it, does it specifically spell out a type of building? I mean, could I call duplexes and name it a retirement community, or?
Certainly.
You know, I mean, so...
Yeah, the two buildings that are going on Park Overlook, one is already there, and then the other one that's under construction, now those are retirement communities, but there's nothing that would say that, I mean, even a single-family neighborhood, if, that would be a real challenge when you're selling individual buildings like that, to allow only 55 and up, but anything, I mean, it doesn't specify that it has to be at least this many units per building or anything like that.
Okay, I have no questions.
And I think if that was made clear in the verbiage, that it still does not preclude doubles, as long as it is a 55 or older community.
That's if we want to classify it as a retirement, but you can put two dwelling units as a retirement community in the conditions, but right now, it's just, it could be non-retirement community duplexes as it stands.
Now, that's what we're trying to say, maybe we want to loop around that and just add that verbiage, that two families within a retirement community, okay, or something like that, is that, is that where you were trying to head to maybe get, you know, that restriction, that two families are fine as long as it is a, quote, "retirement community", versus a college town, so to speak? And not that I'm having anything negative against college town.
We did exclude dormitories from the proposed uses. It's actually an allowed use in an R-2, or R-3 and R-4, and I didn't think that that would work with the neighborhood.
That may be, but all those on Zink Road, those apartments and condos, those are not dormitories, those are, those are college kids living in private properties.
So, if I could reiterate then, or ask the question, then maybe 2G is the only one we would want to entertain, because all those other things would fall underneath it as long as it was a...
If that's the route you guys are going, but...
Well, I mean, I, maybe that's a question for the applicant.
I think it's also a question for the legal, because what's happening is we don't want to, even though I think I want to do what you're talking about, we don't want to restrict things too much, because we're taking property rights away from the property owner. To protect the neighborhood... To protect the neighborhood is another story. If we leave it the way it's being proposed, the property could be sold, and some new owner could come in and put whatever he wanted in there. Certainly not retirement. So, that's the, any thoughts on that?
So, you could restrict it down to just the one permitted use under G from a legal standpoint. From a practical standpoint, it's going to make difficulties in the future if this property is ever sold or used for any other purpose.
But that would require a zoning change.
Correct, yes.
That's the process.
Yes.
Right, you could come in for a zoning change if something changed. All right. Any further discussion on the permitted uses? Staff? No? Are you comfortable if we were to just add the verbiage to, and not, not that it changes anything, but it just simply outlines and spells out that, yes, doubles are allowed in a retirement community? I mean, as low as the doubles?
Well, I mean, in reality, if you left just G, I mean, that would include doubles. They would still fall underneath the retirement community, but.
Okay, so we don't need to spell it out anymore?
No, the reason I put it back, I was just trying to expand, I mean, the reason I kept duplexes in is so that if, in the future, the retirement community doesn't happen and somebody wants to build similar to what they have across the street, they could do that without going through the legislative process. But, obviously, I mean, if council wants to limit it to just retirement communities on this, then G is all you really need.
And the process, if somebody, if they did sell and somebody came back in and said they wanted to put condos, like, across the street over there, they would just have to come back through here with, for a zoning change to add that to the PUD, correct?
They would amend, they would need to amend the PUD.
Right, they'd go through the same process.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Rock.
Could I get the opinion of the owner, applicant?
Well, what I'd like to, or we would like to say is, our initial focus is a retirement community. But any plan that any builder, any developer would like to do, would like to have flexibility so that the financial prerogatives are also maintained. So, if it does not hurt the traffic side of things on Lillian Lane, then the flexibility would be something that would be nice for us to have, for a developer to come in and develop the property. Our focus is a retirement community for now. That is our focus because it fits very well with our geography there, and the size of the property is less than 10 acres, is eight and a half. It's not going to increase the number of people that are densely powered, densely there. We are maintaining 50 unit, kind of 50, we need whatever the number comes out to be from a six density. So, the traffic should be, it is a concern, but based on the number of people that we are going to be living there, it should be not that difficult for the people living across the street and other places. So, what I'd request the committee and the council to look at is, give us flexibility if possible. Our focus is a retirement community, and it avoids additional steps and becomes, makes the project more financially viable.
All right, thank you. Randy, would you give me the numbers again on the single-family versus doubles, two-family?
What I was provided by the engineer was, single-family versus multifamily.
Multifamily, all right.
Fifty single, fifty single-family homes is 479 trips per day.
Okay.
Fifty apartment units, multifamily apartment units, is 333 trips per day. And 50 senior living units is 186 trips per day.
I don't know for sure, but I got a fairly good feeling that the property to the east is occupied by a large number of senior citizens. So, my guess is that this, even if it was not a, quote, "senior" community, it would still attract those people, myself included. And, so I doubt that even leaving it the way you have it, that the traffic would be any more from this development than it is already from the other, if you just go acreage by, you know, same number of acres, same number of units. Now, yeah, is it going to increase some vehicles? Anything's going to increase vehicles on Lillian Lane. That's, there's no way around that. But, all right, I understand staff's position, and I'm willing to go with it myself. Anything else? All right, do I have a motion to move this to the second reading?
Your Honor, I'd move that ordinance 23-2 to a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 23-2 on to the second reading. All in favor, say aye. All right. Opposed? Motion carries. And I will just make this simple announcement, this is the first reading, so there will be another reading, and at that time, should things change, we can change as well. But it, I'm looking forward to that property being used for a good purpose in our community. So, thank you. All right. Next is PUD Z 22-2.
Z 22-2, an application filed by Matthew Thomas, 3550 Woodman Drive, Kettering, Ohio, 45429. The application requests the rezoning of 10.177 acres from R-1A, one-family residential district, to A1 agricultural district. The property is located at the southwest corner of I-675 and East Patterson Road, further described as Book Two, Page Six, Parcel 74 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas. Ordinance 23-3, an ordinance to rezone 10.177 acres from R1-A1 family residential to A1 agricultural, further described as Book Two, Page Eight, Parcel 74 on the property tax maps of the Green County, Green County, Ohio, excuse me.
All right, thank you. All right, is applicant present? Come on up, give us a name and address, and now you have the floor.
My name is Matthew Thomas. My address is 3550 Woodman Drive, Kettering, Ohio, 45429. So, we brought the, we bought the property, me and my wife, off of East Patterson Road with our main goal of building a single-family residence on it. We're wanting to get it rezoned back to agricultural, so we'll be able to keep some animals on the property. When our kids get older, we want them to have the ability to raise some animals and things like that. We're not doing anything big. We want to have some chickens, and maybe some goats, and a cow, or something like that. And we're wanting to utilize the front three acres or so that's already used as our agricultural right now to put animals on. We're not going to clear any of the woods in the back or anything. We want to leave those, and just make some pass through there so we can walk through them and things, but it's not going to be cleared out for a bunch of animals and things like that. So, mostly just to have a little bit of country in the middle of the city.
There you go.
So.
All right, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Stone, members of council. For recent application requesting approval to rezone approximately 10 acres at 4185 East Patterson Road from R1A1 family residential to A1 agricultural. Property is located just west of the 675 East Patterson Road underpass. As you can see, it is mostly wooded with a portion of it being used agriculturally. The property was recently purchased by the applicant and had previously been owned by the Miami Valley Research Park and had been used agriculturally for several years. Land use plan designates this area, oh, this is a zoning map, sorry. The zoning map, as I stated, the property is zoned R1A. The adjacent properties are zoned A1 to the north. That property is church. Then to the south, you have Bergamo Mount St. John's. That property is zoned A1. And then to the west, you have the R1A neighborhood. To the east, just across the highway, is the Miami Valley, now the City of Beaver Creek property, also used to be Miami Valley Research Park property, and at one point, these two, the park property and this property being rezoned were all one single property. When the 675 was put in, it divided that property up into two separate properties. The land use plan does designate this area within VPA 62, the yellow area, as low-density residential. As the applicant stated, he just wants to build one house on the property, which would maintain that low-density residential designation. As it sits now, being zoned R1A, because it is 10 acres, they could do approximately 20 homes, 20 single-family homes on that R1A property. With the applicant's intent to just have a hobby farm, staff does not have any concerns with that request. We do want to make note that any new structures, any accessory structures that would be built, if they decide to build a barn, would have to be at least 50 feet from that residential property line, just because this is, this would now be an agricultural property. So, we did, we did change that in the code in 2008, that any agricultural property, abutting residential property, does have to maintain a 50-foot buffer for any outbuildings. So, there is still that buffer that would be required. But Planning Commission did, is recommending approval, and staff also is recommending approval, as outlined in the attached ordinance. And if you have any questions, I can answer those following the public hearing.
Thank you. All right, this also is a public hearing. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address counsel on this application? If there is, please come forward, give us a name and address, and limit your comments to about three minutes, please.
My name is Jim Martin. I live at 1765 Pershing Boulevard in Dayton, and I'm the pastor of Grace Christian Center directly across the street from this property. I really don't have any objections to the proposed use, but I do have a question, and the question would be this. As, it's my understanding that the intention is, in part, to build a house on this property. So, then, what are the plans at this time concerning water and sewer for the proposed house? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And, Councilmember Adams, you got any comments?
No, I think, I went out and looked at that property today, and it was, it's a, it would be good for what you want to use it for, I think.
Yeah.
I would want to probably talk to you a little bit about what kind of animals you want to have there as we go further along, but overall, I think it would be a good place, good spot.
Councilmember Doerr.
Yeah, I like the idea as well, especially teaching the next generation. So, kudos to you for that and for your ideas. I do have two questions for you, if I may, and then I do want to follow up on something that was said at the planning commission as well. The location of the house would be towards the front of the property?
It would be towards the back of the property, about where the woods line is.
Okay. And would, do you have a plan for a fence, fenced-in area for animals?
Yeah, so, we don't have any plans drawn up yet. We're in the process of getting them drawn up, but our plan is to put the house towards the back and have a driveway down the middle, have two fenced-in pastures on either side of the driveway, and, yeah, just have a nice fence around them.
Because I see on the property line, there is a gap in the tree line. So, just, I think, out of good neighborliness, to connect it behind it, or to chat with the homeowner and see their perspective at this time as well, just to work things out as neighbors, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
Councilmember Bales.
Along those same lines, I mean, I think it's pretty cool, and usually don't have any issues with downgrading zoning. But can we talk a little bit about the permitted uses in A1, right next to the residential neighborhood is the only thing that kind of concerns me, and if you've heard from any of those neighbors?
So, there are a few permitted principal uses in A1. So, you have agricultural activities, obviously, home occupations, one-family dwellings, sale of farm products grown or raised on the premises, and nursery with no retail structure. So, those are the permitted principal uses. And then the conditional uses, which would have to go back through Planning Commission, airport landing strips, cemeteries, places for religious assembly, nursery schools, wireless telecommunication, wireless telecommunication facilities, landscape contractors, and a nursery with a retail structure.
How about quantity of livestock in a 10-acre parcel?
Yeah, we, in our code, we don't have any, we don't outline, in an agricultural district, what, any types of quantities, or what you can and can't have.
I mean, I totally think the use that the applicant is presenting is great. I'm just thinking down the line a little bit. The planning board did not have any discussion on that topic?
They did not.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Schwartz.
I just wanted to get clarification on Pastor Martin's question as to?
Right.
So, they would be allowed to, because of the size of the property, they would be allowed to have a septic tank, they would be able to have a well, they also would have the option to tie into water and sewer. But those would obviously be questions for, the applicant would want to speak to sanitary engineering and figure out what the best thing is for them, but they could do all of those, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And most of that plat to the west does not have city water?
Correct.
Already.
Correct.
All right. Councilmember Kern?
That was my same question, having to do with the water and the sewer. These are legitimate issues, and I'm glad to hear some direction here that can be followed, Your Honor.
And, you know, the, this is straight zoning, correct?
Correct.
So, there's no conditions that can be put on this. This is, this is not something that we're saying like the previous two, where we can say, let's do this and that. This is straight zoning, so whatever's in the code is what he's allowed to do. And, you know, the number-one effort out there is to be a good neighbor, and that's what it takes in the whole community, so. Any other comments? Do I have a motion?
Motion to move ordinance 23-3 to a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 23-3 on to the second reading. All in favor, say aye. All right. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right. Ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. First is ordinance 22-29.
Ordinance 22-29, an ordinance amending commercial planned unit development 99-11, further described as Book One, Page Nine, Parcells 113 and 115 on the property tax maps of Green County, Ohio, to revise ingress and egress access limitations.
Thank you. Staff, any further input? Council have any comment on the second reading? All right, I'm not sure who was the sponsor for the?
Councilmember.
Move to approve ordinance 22-29.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 22-29. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right. Next is Resolution 23-1.
Resolution 23-1, a resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee, the Financial Administrative Services Director, to request advanced draws upon the amounts collected by the Green County Auditor for the City of Beaver Creek, 2022 Real Estate and Personal Property Taxes collected during calendar year 2023.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. This is our annual request to the county auditor to provide us advances in our property tax collection. They usually send the property tax over in March and August. By sending in this resolution, it authorizes him to release that early. So, last year, we received eight advances totaling almost $16 million. So, in the old days, when interest didn't mean a whole lot, it didn't really matter that much, but now that State of Ohio is almost at 400. that much, but now that State of Ohio is almost at four and a half, those extra months and days of getting our money early might mean something eventually to our interest revenue.
Sure.
So, this action just asks him to provide us that service.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash one.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution twenty-three dash one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is Resolution twenty-three dash two, and this is the first of three resolutions that are all on the same subject, but we'll get into those. We're going to read the resolution first here.
Resolution number twenty-three dash two, a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council determining it necessary to proceed with submitting the question of levying an additional tax in excess of the ten-mil limitation to the electors of the city pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section five-seven-zero-five-point-nineteen and subsection five-seven-zero-five-point-one-nine-J, as amended for the purpose of providing and maintaining motor vehicles, communications, other equipment, buildings, and sites for such buildings used directly in the operation of the police department for the payment of salaries of permanent or part-time police communications or administrative personnel to operate the same, including the payment of any employer contributions required for such personnel pursuant to Section one-four-five-point-one-eight, or four-eight, excuse me, or seven-four-two-point-three-three of the Ohio Revised Code, or for other related costs which levy shall be one and two tenths, one-point-two mils, and which levy shall run for a continuing period of time pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section five-seven-zero-five-point-one-nine, and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith.
Thank you. You know you have to do that two more times.
Yeah. Wow.
Oh, man. All right, so I'm going to, this is the first of three resolutions on the agenda that all deal with the same subject, and so we will get the overview from staff, and then we will go through each resolution.
All right, counsel, mayor and city council, tonight, as you just heard, we've talked about this in the work session just prior to this, about the police funding. This is what it really has to, has to deal with. So there's really, on the agenda tonight, you have three options, really, but the blank one is last, and that just means it's a fill-in-the-blank style, so council would have the option to do anything that they would see fit. I will say this, for those watching or listening, this is just the first step of certifying the levy amount, so this is, before this is, does not put it on the ballot. This just simply sends a, sends this resolution to the county auditor to ask him to certify what does one-point-two mils equal, what does one-point-eight mils equal, or fill in the blank, what does blank equal. That's all that does, and then at a certain time, we'll have a calendar of, at the end of this presentation. So the police budget and staffing update, the twenty-twenty-three police budget represents a status quo for staffing of twenty-twenty-three, but we'll possibly need to begin steps of reductions in twenty-twenty-four or so. We had a little shift of, because of, of a changing of vacancies, extreme vacancies, I would put, that caused additional expenses not to be spent, basically, and with CARES and COVID money that came in as well, that helped the fund balance to a certain degree. So we're talking about making this funding, funding continue to stretch as we have, but if additional funding is not secured in twenty-twenty-three, we do have to look at beginning certain actions in twenty-twenty-four, which is just around the corner, because anything we put on the levy right now, if it's passed in May, would not be collected until twenty-twenty-four. I know it's hard to start talking about future years already, but it sneaks up on you real quick. Twenty-twenty-three proposed deficit budget is about one-point-four million, that's what we adopted. It's on page thirty-four of the budget book. The expenditures exceeded the levy revenue growth, causing the deficit to continue to grow without reductions, without reducing. That's something that we have to always explain on, as we operate off of property tax levies, that I'll explain here in a second. About seventy-five percent of the police department budget is personnel cost, so when you come down to the other additional costs, hard costs, gasoline costs, fixing the building, buying, purchasing capital equipment, that only represents about twenty-five percent of it. You know, paying your electric bill and things of that nature. The last additional funding was in two thousand and fourteen, so that's been nine years without additional funding. The average historical growth of the property tax levies is under two percent per year. Fixed levies, that's why I wanted to really stress here, a lot of people, if they got a, you know, house reappraisal done by the county auditor on their house, and say it increased it by ten percent, they think their property tax and the city gets additional ten percent. That is not true. These are fixed levies. So I told Rotary this week that, or last week, that it's like a cruise ship, and you have deck chairs on a cruise ship. We only have a hundred deck chairs. So no matter what happens with your property tax increase, as far as your house appraisal happens, we still get a hundred deck chairs. Twenty-five may be moved over to the other side of the ship versus the fifty, and, you know, rearrange the deck chairs, but in the end, the city does not receive any additional funding because of reappraisals for levies. Ninety percent of the property tax we receive is directly from fixed levies, which do not change according to property reappraisals. Only the inside millage of the general fund goes up and down according to property appraisals, which is a less than seven percent of our total, total citywide budget, so very small portion. So just wanted to explain that. We've said that we've operated, utilized two million in non-levy funding, that's what's helped stretch this, CARES and ARPA funding, to help stretch these levy dollars over the past few years. The twenty-twenty-three budget savings due to the extreme staffing shortages, and, you know, these types of revenues, you know, have extended the levy. We're waiting on most building issues and repairs in twenty-twenty-three. There's issues that we can't address unless we have major reconstruction or a new building, which, if you do notice, we did not put the new building on as an option. That did fail last time with that. We didn't put that on as an option, but there is a fill-in-the-blank, so city council, that still gives you an option if that's the method or way you want to move ahead. But we will continue to do the basic repairs that we have to do out of safety concerns. As mentioned during that as well, House Bill five-twelve, one of the factors is the additional in pension funding that the House Bill five-twelve is taking up, that could cause and change the percentage that the municipalities would have to pay on pension funding, which could be up to a million dollars a year in additional funding that the city would be liable for. In this chart, this is a chart that we're just showing again, you see the, the top of the part, we start with twenty-twenty-two, and the twenty-twenty-three budget deficits one-point-four million, and as you see it grow, one-point-eight, which then, at that point in time, in twenty-twenty-four, you end the year just below the fund balance. And I, I would highly recommend for any city council that we do not drain fund balances. If you went on into twenty-twenty-five, you would literally drain the fund balance. What happens there is, if you drain the fund balance, you're putting, you know, things in jeopardy as far as funding, but you also, then, when you go back to ask for a levy, you're having asked for a larger amount to compensate for the lack of fund balance. So it gets you in the end, one way or the other, as far as the fund balance. So as this chart goes, shows you the top line, just is the growth of the expected revenue versus the expected expenses. And as I said, those two get further and further apart as, you know, property taxes two percent or less growth, and even the basic cost of inflation, not even mentioning the type of inflation we're going under now, this is projected as a basic type of inflation. And as you see in twenty-twenty-four, the bottom part of the graph is where the two lines intersect, is where the cash balance drops below the twenty percent recommended fund balance. And so future actions without additional funding, the current authorized staffing is fifty sworn officers, that's been since two thousand and eighteen. In ninety-six, it was forty-six sworn officers, and again, about seventy-five percent of the total twenty-twenty-three budget is in personnel costs. So currently, we have forty-seven officers and one cadet. We're still been, you know, as Chief told you just before, during the work sessions, we've been in a constant state of hiring, as we've had retirements and, and people leaving for other jobs that have decided to move on. The city manager, I have continued to authorize the chief to continue to try to fill the vacancies, expecting additional retirements and vacancies in twenty-twenty-three, we've already been notified of those. And funding uncertainty does, does impact the ability to attract and retain officers. It's one thing, I think the first thing that they will look at is if somebody's wanting to either change their career from one city or another city to move to here, one thing they're going to look at is not only accreditation and everything that we strive for, but they'll look at the stability of the financial for their future, for their best interest. When you're looking at the police, our projected police budget deficit, as we've stated here, as it grows each year, and you think about the seventy-five percent of the budget is personnel cost, then you look at what an officer or sergeant makes in the range with all benefits, all everything. You begin to see, okay, if I have a one-point-eight million, two-point-one-five million budget deficit, yet, and seventy-five percent of my budget is personnel cost, you know, I can't cut gasoline, I can't cut electric bills, you know, we can do what we can as far as efficiencies, but there's, it comes down to the meat of where's the majority of your funding, and that would be personnel cost, which we could do during hiring freezes and, you know, hopefully extend, do it through attrition, but that's if we get to that point. Right now, we would be looking at late twenty-four, and definitely for the twenty-twenty-five budget of having to definitely address those. That's what I considered, because of what happened with the CARES money and everything, our cliff, if you want to call it a cliff, got moved out a year, basically. So now, we were at a cliff that we had to do something this year, or, I mean, or a cliff was happening where it was going to be drastic. Now it's a year before we have to actually take the drastic measures that we'd have to, which I'd rather not be up against the cliff, to be honest. So this is, it doesn't change the need, doesn't change what's happening, but it does move the cliff. But I'm much more comfortable on this side of the cliff than the other. And a delay of capital equipment, of course, is something we would always consider to save funding. And you saw this, the timeline tonight, again, this is just requesting the county auditor to certify the millage. We have before you the resolutions prepared, one-point-two, one-point-eight, and a blank one. January twenty-third, there would have to be one selected, or I guess none, if that would be the will of council, but only one can be placed on the ballot, so there'd be a resolution on the ballot, multiple resolutions if so desired, but only one could be approved. And February tenth is the deadline to file with the Board of Elections for the May ninth election, and of course, May ninth is the election. And Bill, Mr. Cattara, and myself are here for any questions.
All right, thank you. All right, so this resolution, the resolution in front of us tonight, along with the next two, are just simply to ask the county auditor for the revenue from this levy. Any discussion? I think we need to know the revenue for one-point-two mils, so is there a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash two.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution twenty-three dash two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, next, I know you have to read it, but it's Resolution twenty-three dash three, and wake us up when you're finished.
Resolution twenty-three dash three, a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council determining it necessary to proceed with submitting the question of levying an additional tax in excess of the ten-mil limitation to the electors of the city pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section five-seven-zero-five-point-one-nine and subsection five-seven-zero-five-point-one-nine-J, as amended for the purpose of providing and maintaining motor vehicles, communications, other equipment, buildings, and sites for such buildings used directly in the operation of the police department for the payment of salaries of permanent or part-time police communications or administrative personnel to operate the same, including the payment of any employer contributions required for such personnel pursuant to Section one-four-five-point-four-eight or seven-four-two-point-three-three of the Ohio Revised Code, or for other related costs which levy shall be one and eight tenths, one-point-eight mils, and which levy shall run for the continuing period of time pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section five-seven-zero-five-point-one-nine, and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we've heard the different options, and this one would be for the five additional Any comments? Again, this is something that we need to know the dollar amount, so unless you're opposed to it entirely, we need this resolution passed.
Mayor?
Yes?
May I move to approve Resolution twenty-three dash three?
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution twenty-three dash three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is Resolution twenty-three dash four.
Resolution twenty-three dash four, a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council determining it necessary to proceed with submitting the question of levying an additional tax in excess of the ten-mil limitation to the electors of the city pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section five-seven-zero-five-point-one-nine and subsection five-seven-zero-five-point-one-nine-J, as amended for the purpose of providing and maintaining motor vehicles, communications, other equipment, buildings, and sites for such buildings used directly in the operation of the police department for the payment of salaries of permanent or part-time police communications or administrative personnel to operate the same, including the payment of any employer contributions required for such personnel pursuant to Section one-four-five-point-four-eight or seven-four-two-point-three-three of the Ohio Revised Code, or for other related costs which levy shall be blank mils, and which levy shall run for a continuing period of time pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section five-seven-zero-five-point-one-nine, and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith.
Thank you. All right, this resolution, if we wanted to plug a number into it, could be for anything, but it could also then be as high as what we had on the ballot last time. And if there's no interest in doing that, then my recommendation is that I get a motion to approve and no second. So, is there any discussion? Anybody interested in filling in the blank on this resolution? Uh-uh. And can somebody make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash four?
So Robert, Robert's rules requires there be a motion.
Move to approve Resolution twenty-three dash four.
Is there a second? Seeing none, the motion fails for the lack of a second. Thank you. Next is Resolution twenty-three dash five.
Resolution twenty-three dash five, a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council extending the moratorium on the acceptance of new applications for electronic variable message signs or digital billboards in the city of Beaver Creek for an additional six months, and imposing a six-month moratorium on the acceptance of new applications for off-premise signs in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you, and we would ask counsel to address this one.
So this is, the extension is similar to what has been passed in the, previously, so we're just extending that for another six months to review the current code. There is one change to this one, including not allowing any off-premises signs. There was a case just last year, it was in the Supreme Court, the city of Austin versus a sign company, guys don't really need to know the name, wherein a very similar state... a sign company, guys don't really need to know the name, wherein a very similar statute was upheld by the Supreme Court that just prohibited off-premises signs.
Comments, questions? Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 23-5.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 23-5. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is liquor permit. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council.
Good evening.
Before you this evening, we have a liquor permit. It's a transfer. The Ohio Department of Commerce Division of Liquor Control sent notification of a request regarding the transfer of a C1 and C2 liquor permit from Philly Petroleum LLC. They're doing business as Dayton-Zenia Marathon at 3810 Dayton-Zenia Road in Beaver Creek. They're transferring it to Monac 1011 LLC at the same location. The record checks required by the Ohio Department of Commerce Division of Liquor Control were conducted on the applicants and shareholders for this application request, and there were no concerns or issues, and staff is recommending this application move forward without further comment.
Motion to accept without comment.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is council time. And Councilmember Schwartz, you want to kick it off?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to keep it short and sweet. I only have two things that I wanted to address. The first is Citizen Police Academy. For those of you who have not had an opportunity to go through the Citizen Police Academy, it is an excellent opportunity to get a firsthand look at what our police department does on a day-to-day basis. I went through it last year, a year before last, and it was such a great experience. So for those who are interested, I would encourage you to explore and apply for the program. The second thing that I wanted to address was I wanted to commend the Beaver Creek Police Department. We had a small incident on our street where my husband caught a porch pirate in the act, and so he called the police department, and there was a very quick response, and so he was very pleased by that. So always working around the clock and just thankful for their response time. That's all I have, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Curran.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, first of all, want to congratulate the manager for his presentation of Rotary. He mentioned it earlier, but I think he did a very decisive approach and presented all the options to, to the members of the Rotary. Number two, certainly glad to participate in Wartinger Park in December. That was really fun to go out and see all the activities that were taking place there and to hear about bathroom options for the barn, which were very interesting. And then, of course, all of us were there for Golden Corral. That was a fantastic opening, and we're glad to see that restaurant back in action, and it was really exciting to see all the people outside waiting to get in. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Councilmember Beto.
Well, I will echo Councilman Curran's comments. The Wartinger Park cabins were decorated very nicely, and I want to thank the volunteer organizations who spent their time and, and money to do that, and that was a really great day, and a lot of people had a good time, including my daughter and I. So that was fun. And also, welcome back Golden Corral. That was a nice ribbon cutting, and I wish them the best. Finally, last week, I had the opportunity to attend the school chat with the superintendent day, and it was very, a very nice, small group. Basically, myself, a couple of citizens, and a couple of school board members and the superintendent, and just got to hear about their future plans, and then also listen to a couple of comments and concerns for some, from some parents. So it was, it was just a nice way to listen to the school board and superintendent respond to some of those issues and talk about the future, so it was cool. Finally, just happy new year to everybody.
There you go. Councilmember Duer.
Thank you, Mayor. Likewise, I'd like to congratulate Golden Corral on their reopening. Really a wonderful event and ribbon cutting. And I think about some of the businesses in northern Beaver Creek that had the double whammy of being hit by the tornado and then COVID. And so, this is a, a business that was really hit, hit hard because of COVID, just given their model, and so fantastic to see the redesign to the building, all the remodeling, and congratulations on reopening. Really wonderful to have them back. Couple of shout-outs. First is to Beaver View Bowl. My, my son took part in an after-school program this past semester, got to ride the big red bus and then go bowling, and they, they had a wonderful time with his teammates. So I, I, I just thought it was the really great event, so shout out to Beaver View Bowl. And then, congratulations to the Beaver Creek High School Ice Hockey Team, who won the fifth, their fifth straight Dayton Mayor's Tournament. Really remarkable. It's one thing to win a tournament once, and then to repeat, and then to do it five times, so congratulations to them.
Very good. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, sir. I hope everyone had a great holiday, got a chance to re-energize and get ready for this new year. I'd like to recognize today, this National Law Enforcement Day. We in Beaver Creek are fortunate to have a great group of men and women who put the uniform and badge on every day to keep us safe, and we want to thank them for everything they do. And as Councilman Schwartz said, Beaver Creek Police, Citizens Police Academy is coming up. It's a great way to learn, get a little insight into the day in the life of a police officer, find out what they all have to do. I was able to participate in the gift wrapping and distribution of gifts and food boxes to several citizens in Beaver Creek who were in need. I want to thank the Rotary Club of Beaver Creek for sponsoring that activity. Had a fun time with participating in the Meet the Grinch with the Beaver Creek Police at the Fairfield Commons Mall. I don't remember the total numbers, but there was between 1,500 and 2,000 kids that came through there to see the Grinch. It was a really impressive turnout. And I want to thank Fairfield Commons Mall and Beaver Creek Police Department for sponsoring that. I was able to represent the city at the Wright Brothers' First Flight Memorial Celebration out at the Wright Memorial. This commemorates the Wright Brothers' first flight on December 17th, 1903. I too attended the Wartinger Park, Welcome to Wartinger Park Christmas deal, and I want to thank the Parks Department for putting that on. They do a great job every year. And also to the Comonis Club, Historical Society, and the Optimist Club for all the work that they did out there, and for Pete figuring out how to plug in all the lights. I was also happy to support the Bears for Children's at Build a Bear at the Fairfield Commons Mall with Kalista Hess. She's done this for several years. I don't know what the total number of bears she was able to produce, but I know her goal was 700, and she gives all those to the Children's Medical Center for the kids that come through the emergency room and those that have to stay in the hospital through the holidays. So that's a, that's a great activity. I too attended the ribbon cutting at Golden Corral. I missed out on the food because I had to leave, but that's okay. Several other people were able to partake of that. And now, I get to recognize some employees and their anniversaries for Beaver Creek. Andy Ambern has golf, 18 years. Joe Moore, golf, 18 years. Joel Diaz, police, 11 years. Jewel Schuler, police, six years. Jerry Russell, public service, 11 years. Mike Winterbothen, public service, 11 years. Trevor Gray, public service, two years. Zach White Parks, 13 years. Chief Fiorita, 31 years. Sean Sumner, police, 31 years. Tyler Barlage, Senior Center, three years. Karen Mahaffey, police, 12 years. Lori McIntosh, police, seven years. Emilio Belager, I hope I pronounced that right, public service, 14 years. Clayton Campbell, public service, 14 years. Kevin Vance, public service, 14 years. Jake Kleinhans, golf, six years. Don Cole, police, 28 years. Greg Weiser, police, 15 years. Sarah DeBoer, police, nine years. And Terrence Sullivan, golf, 11 years. We have a lot of really good employees here with the city of Beaver Creek, and they do stay around a long, a long time, and it's really great to see that. It's, we commend their directors and supervisors for keeping them around. So that's all I have, sir.
All right. All right. First meeting at 2023. It's going to be a good year, I do believe. And so, I'm looking forward to it. Looking forward to working with all, everyone here and staff. Again, I'm going to reiterate that tonight is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and that is a national effort, and certainly well-deserved. But I'm not going to repeat all the events. I attended several of these things that people talked about, and no sense going over them again, but it's, it's been a good start to the year, and it was a great finish to the year. So at that, I am going to turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll speed through these. The city launched a brand-new, just this month, a monthly digital newsletter. So please, subscribers will receive a monthly newsletter in their email box that includes information on city, project services, program, events, and more. As part of the effort to keep outreach to our community, you can visit beaver creek ohio.gov/stayconnected to subscribe, so please do. We've already gotten a lot of hits on this. Citizen Police Academy been mentioned, so again, nine weeks, starts February 1st through March 29th. On Wednesday evenings, classes from 6:00 to 9:00. Again, please visit the website, beaver creek ohio.gov/citizens/policystudy academy to find more out about it and register. Apply beyond a city board or commission. We are taking applications. There's a list. In February, the city council will be appointing people for vacancies and, and people whose terms have expired to these boards and commissions. So if you're interested in looking at what's available, beaver creek ohio.gov/boardsandcommissions. Feld mentioned the holiday coming up, Martin Luther King Day, Junior Day, on, coming up on the following Monday, January 16th. So city hall and the senior center will be closed in observance for the holiday. As always, non-emergencies, please contact Beaver Creek Police Department, 937-426-1225. And I just want to remind the audience, normally, we would be here on January 16th on the holiday, but since that is a holiday, our work session will be on Tuesday, January 17th, at 5:00 PM, same place, same bat channel, just different day. And that's all I have tonight.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is citizen comments, and this is the time when anybody can come up and address council on any issue at all. And we limit comments to three minutes, or you can have the time donated up to nine minutes. So is there anyone here tonight that would like to address council on any issue at all? Please come up, give us a name and address, please.
Name, Talis Netero. Address, 132 Miami's Bird, 45342. Just moved from Miami's Bird, so I kind of. So my issue is, or the thing that I want to speak to you all about is, of course, John Crawford, one of the reasons I'm here, honestly. I'm pretty sure y'all all know the story about John Crawford III, because we've, we've done work at Walmart, at the mall, we did an event up there also. But I was here, I'm here because I want to speak to you all about the street. What street is that that's in front of Beaver Creek Walmart? Between the street, I mean, between Walmart and the mall, that street, that's Pentagon?
Pentagon.
Right. Why not change that street name to John Crawford III? Why not change that name to John Crawford III? I mean, we talked about sending, setting an example for the kids in the future. I heard a lot of great things about this police department and about Beaver Creek, and that would be a great thing for the city of Beaver Creek to do on behalf of this young man that was honestly murdered by two officers who received no punishment, to our knowledge, that the people's knowledge, and to my knowledge, they're still on the force, and nothing happened. And the least, the least, the least that you all can do is consider, or please implement his name instead of Pentagon Highway, pay tribute, because what happened was pretty unfortunate. It could have been me. The mother and father of this young man have to deal with this every day. It's unfortunate that it happens as often as it does, so I'm just saying, consider that. It's just me today. And I'm not trying to cause any ruckus here. I'm great at that, I've done that. You've all may have seen me, but they didn't know it was me. Out front of Beaver Creek Walmart, out front of, or inside the store of Walmart, actually, and also at the mall as well, on December 30th or the 29th, I can't remember. I've done a lot in six years. And also, with that academy I heard of, somebody here mentioned a police academy? That's great. At that academy, is there a way that we can see what's being taught to these officers or what's being shown to them?
This is a citizen, well, I don't want to get into that because we're not supposed to interact at this point.
Okay.
But yes, I'll answer, be happy to answer that question for you, though.
Okay, sure. So I was, I mean, the reason I say that is because what happened to John Crawford was unfortunate, and it was a few things that could have prevented that if the officers would have came in and spoke and said, who is this guy? Or put it down, if he would have heard, I'm pretty sure, they'd say, oh, I didn't know it was a serious, it's fake. Calm down, please, it's okay. You know, it's, it's a lot of things that could have happened before they just came in. That's one of the quickest murders by officers in history. I don't know if you all looked it up, but I definitely did. Only one that comes quicker than that is Tamar Rice, who was 12 years old and it happened on December 23rd, same year. It's unfortunate. So I'm asking today if we can honor his family and his boy, who was a young man at the time, a father of two. If we could turn that street name into John Crawford III? That's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Anyone else have want to address council?
I don't know if I, my name is Shirley Schultz, 2906 Dayton-Zenia Road, Beaver Creek, Ohio. I don't know if I can do this or not. A dear friend passed away on January 2nd, and he was somebody who really did a lot for Beaver Creek. His name is Rex Malinex. Rex was 98 years old. He was in World War II as a top turret gunner, and he served his country as a very young person, and he came home after shooting, being credited with shooting down a German jet as a top turret gunner. We moved in next to his house 40-some years ago. Rex went to Ohio University, then he returned to the Air Force as an officer. He was connected with the Dockery Realty here in Beaver Creek. He and his wife were very active in the Historical Society, and living 98 years old, still knowing what was going on, just impressed me. And I attended his funeral Saturday. Tobias recognized him very nice, as did his family. And if you're interested, on the Tobias website, you can read about Rex Malinex and the wonderful things he did. Thank you.
Thank you. You got through it just fine. And if, if you'll indulge me just one second, I'm going to, on that note, I think most of you probably do know that Evelyn Donegan also passed, and her service, her viewing and service was this past week. But she is the wife of Paul Donegan, the, I believe he was the first mayor of the city, not the first mayor. Yeah, the hardware store. But anyway, for those of you that didn't know that she had passed, I just wanted to pass it on. Is there anyone else tonight that would like to address council on any issue whatsoever? Seeing none, we will move on. I believe we're, next is the, an executive session. I have a motion, please.
Mayor, I move to enter into executive session pursuant to Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code for the purpose of consideration of the sale of property.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call, please? I did. Councilmember Duer.
Duer. Councilmember Schwartz?
Councilmember Duer?
Yes.
Councilmember Bales?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Yes. And for the sake of the televised audience and those in the room, there will be no decisions or action taken on this executive session, so the televised portion will end. However, we will reconvene here to close out the regular session of the meeting. So with that, we are in executive session.